Result of the board's investigation, we turn to regular session at six twenty-five. Motion please.
Motion to call.
To call section three. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion back. Alright, presentations.
I have a plaque that I want to do like two percent just to call it up. I don't know if a lot of you know, I used to live right across the road from the grounds, and every morning I would go to work at five thirty in the morning, and he's out there doing everything for this school, checking the safety of the fence, the block, picking up anything, any maintenance type of thing, so I want to thank you for that. You and your whole crew, that whole crew is recognized.
Thank you. I want to thank the board, Mr. Mannix, the opportunity of working, and I don't do it alone.
No doubt.
I have support, Shane, Bruce, Jeff, so a bunch of nice guys, nice place to work, and it's hard to give you the help, so you gotta keep what you got.
Yep.
So, thanks very much.
Thank you.
So Mike is our architect and engineer, Mike's from our architect and engineers company. This is what we showed you last meeting, but now it's more formal, and there's a resolution to move this along, so if you had questions, now is definitely the time. Thank you for having me, as Mr. Mannix said, my name is Mike Harris, I'm an architect with BCA Architects, and tonight I'm going to talk about the proposed capital project. And it's, I want to talk about the scope, what's in the project, the budget, what's going to cost, the schedule, how long it will take, and also a little bit about the process, pre-referendum, pre-vote, and subsequent to the vote. So I can advance that, that's my opening, my slide there to get moving to the next slide. The scope of budgets and the schedule, we, the facilities committee and the administration and I have been working on this probably for the last four or five months, and we've developed the project that we're going to present tonight to the board at. And also, as I mentioned, I want to talk a little bit about the process leading up to the vote first, we'll get into the scope and the budgets in a moment, but the process for those of you who haven't been through before, because we proposed an additional classrooms, an expansion, expansion of the facilities, we're gonna have to do what's called preliminary submission to the state education department, that's where we're gonna show them the floor plans, the costs associated with it, the student enrollment and facility deeds, deeds assessment, which is a narrative report basically describing the need for that additional space. We'll send that all down to SED, and they'll come back with what they call the maximum cost allowance, the amount of aid that will be redistributed to the district for the cost of the addition. Once we get the approval from SED, and we know exactly what the reimbursement's going to be, your fiscal advisor will put together your financial schedules, that's for the bond payments. Seeker, actually the seeker will put down preliminary submission, that's to make sure there's no environmental impact to the campus, to the site of the project. This is a relatively simple project, seven thousand square foot in addition, and other than that mainly interior improvements, so there's, there will not be any issues with the environmental with seeker. With all that information gathered, you'll have a bond proposition put forward, forward to the board, most likely in January, looking to establish the vote date, which we're thinking March is the, is the afternoon time, the way, the way the private court law. So that's the kind, that's the type of work that we'll be doing over the course of the next few months to get ready for the vote, after the vote, we'll begin the actual deciding So what all is involved in the project? The major components are here at the main campus, you'll see the red rectangle number one, that's, that's a seven classroom addition on the elementary wing, and we're looking at a program that will house six pre-K classrooms. We're building seven because as we, as we connect to the existing building on the end, we're going to engulf one classroom, you're gonna lose the windows, so it becomes an interior space that's, that's not usable for, for the educational program, so that internal space would be used for, for storage or toilet rooms, or some other function that doesn't require the natural light. To the top of the page, I'll go clockwise there, there's a three up just north of the bus garage, northwest, I'm not sure of the orientation, I think it's west, that's a twenty-five hundred square foot cold storage building to be constructed new on that site. And then the number two down to the lower right-hand portion, you recently acquired two buildings, a vacant building and a residential style building on the corner there. The thought here, at one point, we, we batted around using those buildings for storage or for district offices or some other purpose, but I think after we worked our way through the most logical scope, it was decided that the building should go, to be torn down on the site, and then where the number two is located, that would be a parking lot basically in front of this facility, so tearing those buildings down, you're gonna be able to see the face of the amphitheater here, which is a beautiful building, and then we'll provide additional parking there with easy accessible access to that site. Okay. This is a blow-up of the addition that would be an extension of the elementary wing, and I mentioned six pre-K classrooms, but the intent is that the classrooms that are added would be just part of the elementary program. I'm not sure at the moment if they were grades one through three or one, two, but the pre-K program would be housed within the existing footprint, so some of the rooms, some of the grade sections would move around within that space, and that's yet to be determined exactly which grade levels would fit in the new versus in the existing footprint. Along with the construction of this addition, we're gonna relocate the basketball court to the, you can see the left side of the entrance to the stadium, and then rework the playground, which would kind of be, become within the U shape of that building space, and then we would also run a fence on the lower side to kind of protect and control that playground area. This is the concept for the cold storage building, like I mentioned, twenty-five hundred square feet, electrified, exhausted, but no heating system, a kind of a bare bone structure just to give you a place for field storage or anything else that comes on campus that can be held in a cold space. So that, that's the scope of the project, I'll get into a little bit more of renovations and some interior reconstruction work unrelated to the, to the addition, but if you look at the, the cost, the schedule we put together, across the, the top of the gray, we've got construction contracts, inflation, and contingency, and the cost of that, including all the soft costs that are totaled up below, it's a little over ten million dollars, ten, ten million ninety-two thousand. We've, we've identified or we've included at this point fifty percent inflation escalator because this project is going out over multiple years, twenty-twenty-four will be the first construction on site, and we go into twenty-twenty-five, so with, looking three years out, about two to three years out, two and a half being the midpoint, we wanted to make sure we had enough money in there for the what-ifs, we don't know what inflation's gonna be next year, hopefully it's not the eight percent that we saw this year, but if it, but if it is, you're covered, if it isn't, then we've been kind of acting prudently, and there's an opportunity that not all those costs would be covered. The contingencies, the contingency line is about ten percent of the construction plus the inflation, and that's for the what-ifs, if we run into something during construction that was unforeseen, if we find hazardous materials that we're not aware of, or if there's an issue with the site and the foundations have to be expanded, you've got money to cover those costs. So that's, that, that's what the, the total construction cost would be, the incidentals, are any, as I mentioned, any soft costs, so that would be R fees, construction management, attorneys, survey, legal counsel, bonding costs, interest costs, hazardous materials, and just a myriad of any of those incidental costs that become attached to the project, and as you can see there, those are estimated at about one point seven million, which I think is about sixteen, seventeen percent, a little less than that, sixteen percent of the overall cost of the project. So as, as in summary, it's about a ten million dollar project, the, the first two columns, the pre-K addition we spoke about, the storage building we spoke about, the other two aspects of the project are internal renovations and improvements at both the main building and Cumberland Head, and I believe that's gonna be my, the next slide. Yeah. At the, in twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty, we did a building addition survey of all your occupied facilities, it's a state mandated review of the facilities, basically assess them and determine, to look out for things that are gonna need improvement or replacement in the coming years, and what we've done is highlighted what we call priority one items at the main building and the Cumberland Head, and for the most part, they all deal with your ventilation, your mechanical heating systems, a lot of them have to do with the kitchen and the cafeteria areas, but also there's quite a few units in both facilities that are near thirty years old that would be upgraded and replaced. So that's the, when we talk about the additional scope, in, in addition to the classroom addition and the storage building, it again is mainly interior mechanical improvements, and same with Cumberland Head focusing on, on mechanical improvements for your ventilation systems. The last slide in this presentation is an idea we had about breaking out some of the work in the, from the BCS into consecutive hundred-year, hundred thousand dollar projects. Each year, the project, the district can do a hundred thousand dollar project and be reimbursed in the same year for that expenditure, so over the course of the main project, which is a three or four-year process, we can, we can accommodate another hundred, three hundred thousand dollars worth of work by pulling it from the BCS and implementing it over the course of that timeframe. I believe that's the last, oh, sorry, one more timeframe. The, what I've done here is it's highlighted the, the bold lines are probably the important dates to be looking at in the schedule, we've been, what we've been working up to is the SED preliminary submission, that's what I talked about, pre-vote things that we need to get resolved and completed, so we submit it to the state education department to get their approval so that we can establish the vote date. So we're looking at gathering all that information this month, sending it down to SED, we'll look to garner their approval after the first of the year, and then probably your, your January board meeting, you'll be able to establish the, the vote date for this project, minimum forty-five days notice to the, to the voters of that, so we look at the March, mid-March vote for the project, then we run into, we roll into our architectural and engineering design, which would take us through December, to submit to SED, three months for approval, as soon as the project's approved, we would open bids in, say, April of twenty-twenty-four, start construction in July of twenty-twenty-four, and then capture both that summer as well as the summer of twenty-twenty-five, so from where we stand today, it's a three-year project to get us to the issue. And that should be the end of the, of the presentations, have you have to answer any
It's not an actual ten million dollar price tag, that's before all the state aid comes in, correct? It's not ten million the cost to us, that's total, minus what the state aids us.
Correct, so we get aided on a portion of this project, so whatever portion is aidable, we will get approximately eighty percent of that back, and the plan is we're working with fiscal advisors to lay out a plan for you guys to look at, at the next board meeting, and it'll show you exactly what they think is going to be aidable, what is going to be aidable, whatever isn't aidable, we're looking, we've talked, we talked at operations committee that the plan is to use the capital reserve and some of our fund balance to offset those costs, so we would still do a bond, we'd still borrow money, but the aid coming in would offset that bond payment, so therefore there would be no cost to the taxpayer.
No new cost.
No new cost, yep.
I do have one question on part number two, which is, I would assume is the corrugated steel building, right?
Yes.
So we are gonna take that building over?
That's gonna be taken down.
Taken down, did we already own that?
No, we just received that.
That was one of my questions, did I miss how we obtained that building in, obviously the brick?
Yep.
Little Caesar's signed building that is still privately owned, right?
No, that is ours now as well.
Oh, really?
As of October.
And how did we obtain those?
It was October.
Or maybe I missed it.
You might have missed, you might have missed the meeting, we didn't talk about that in the executive session because it was under one of the, one of the exemptions to go in executive session while this was pending, and it was given to us by a company who was moving into the, into the district, and it was given to us under what they call host community agreement, so instead of giving, giving us a pile of payment and little taxes, they instead gave us a benefit, which is the properties.
Was that the solar farm?
That is, that's the second solar farm, the first solar farm, they were going to do that as well, that fell through, it then got reignited with another solar farm that's being built, I think on the Benny Blakewell.
Okay, awesome.
Yeah, they were turned over to us, I think it was October eighteenth was the official day they were turned over to the school, the buildings.
I know this is a far reach, but that corner is a nightmare.
So Doug, you remember last meeting, I said you had a really good idea of even expanding another lane there, we talked about getting a light by having another lane there, that's on the table for operations, I think we talked about that in operations as well, so especially if that building comes down, and Mike just talked about that, we did a lot of analysis on that building, besides rocks, he wanted to sell pizza out of that. That, it could cost a ton to bring a building like that up to code, more, more than, it's almost more than building, yeah, so there's more than likely it's gonna be taken down, and then the board can decide some of the things you're talking about.
Perfect, thank you.
The three projects of, trying to complain doing us hundred thousand dollar projects during the years, are those included in the ten million right now, that would come out?
They are, they would be pulled out, and there's other scope that we can add in.
But also give us a little more question on the inflation piece if things were crazy. And then the second, second question, and the additional costs will list out, could the work's in there someplace?
Give us, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we budget it for a full load.
Any other questions?
Great, thank you.
Yeah, so we're not gonna go over right now, we're gonna do the thought change, which was on a strategic plan to develop what the portrait of a graduate should look like, but there were a lot of great thoughts in that, in the two thought exchange, and I just wanted to give some research to the board and go over this research that could help us make really good decisions as we move down, right? So I do have topics, what we're discussing is we'll not be able to screen for the audience, and I think everybody at these tables have, has some of this information, so there was a lot of good thoughts in, in the thought change, and we can, we'll review that soon, but as I was talking to the administrative team about, you know, the future and what we need to do to always try to improve, we, we were talking yesterday about the work of John Hattie, so John Hattie is a researcher, but he's not, he's not an individual who conducts research on individual topics, so John Hattie is, is a research educator who has conducted what they call a meta-analysis, so he's taken all the research on educational topics and brought all the competing research together on these topics, and then developed a, a metric to judge or quantify that research, and his, he has, I will throw it at you, he has all the best things you can try to do in a school district for students, and some of the worst things you can do for students. Having a factor of one, you can see some numerical data on the side of the different research topics, can actually, has been proving to give kids a year's growth for that particular intervention, I wouldn't call it intervention, for that strategy or that particular implementation. If, if an idea or intervention or strategy has a point four, that is the average of all the research, so a point four, he says, or above, is worth engaging in, it has a meaningful benefit to the students, anything below a point four can still show growth, right? Point two, point two would have, you know, like a, a small growth, but in, in his estimation, you might still do it for, for great reasons, but it's not something you're going to do to show like academic improvement or educational growth in a school, and there are things that you do, that the school does do, that are not meant, just, there's a lot of things around here, and some of which, like adventure-based learning is on that list, we have adventure-based learning for other reasons besides academic growth, but it does have some value for academic growth. So I'm gonna give you an example, so again, same with the idea that the hinge point, but the average is point four, anything that falls below that point four does not have a large effect on student achievement, an effect above one is really impressive and can the equivalent, be the equivalent of a year's worth of growth. I'll give you the examples, we've talked here before, and actually the board in other years have seen this research, we talked about class size, right? I'm just using this as an example, we have low class sizes in, in most of our classes, but a lot of people would say, well, class size is a gold standard for better education, and it's not. The research is really kind of clear on that, it does improve education by a point two, one, so there's a lot of other things you can do besides that, so lower class sizes, and a lot of the, he goes, he, he does take the data and synthesize, synthesizes the data, but for instance, one of the factors he says is changing the class size doesn't change the teaching strategy, right? And that's not necessarily going to change the approach of the particular educator, and then there's another side to this, when you look at teacher effectiveness, we know that a great teacher in front of kids can have that year's growth, right? So I think it's almost sarcasm, but he does conclude his analysis with saying, there are amazing teachers who have a major stack on larger classes, so we should not deprive half of these students of those amazing teachers by having, by having the class sizes, so that's an interesting, that's an interesting perspective, but so that's, I'm only bringing that up as, as an illustration of how he digs into the research and discusses value, the value attributed to the particular topic. The other thing you have to be careful of is just reading the title and thinking that we, you know what the, what we're really talking about, because it's like judging a book by Scott, you really want to dive into the research, but you see here, teacher estimates of achievement, point one-six-two, you see responsive intervention is number five on that list, we've done a lot, actually I think it was in the last meeting or this meeting, you're gonna be, I think this meeting, you're approving responsive intervention now is our MTSS plan, and we've done, we've now our second iteration of that plan, so we, we believe heavily in responsive intervention as something that works for kids and is proven, another, another great thing that Hattie has done is, he has done this analysis three different times, so there, there's another, it's kind of confusing when you look at it, but you can see that, you know, ten years ago, responsive intervention had this impact on kids, and now it has X impact on kids, sometimes it's the same, sometimes there's meaningful difference, differences in the, in the metric or in the quantification of the particular intervention. But if you just take a look down, we were doing this with the, with the item team yesterday, and you looked at some of the other things that we do, and I'm not gonna name them all, but on here at point seven is phonics, phonics instruction, that's a, that's a really good number, we've invested, we, the board has invested heavily in phonics instruction and phonemic awareness, and we do a lot of work with that, and actually Principal Scallan just conducted a, a book study on the science of reading, and in that they talk about phonemic awareness and phonics instruction, so that, that's another, that's another intervention, so to speak, that, that we do do. So you will see in here, you will, you will be surprised by some of the numbers that, or the quantification of the particular research, with some of, some of these, let's say there's an early intervention, and I have strong, even early intervention, early intervention has a numerical value of point four-four, so Hattie says that's something you should do, but you might intuitively think that should be a one, but the data of the research over time doesn't show that it has that massive impact, but it has a significant impact. So school size has an impact, and you can see them all, and I did actually include in the back a little more write-up on some of these, not because they mattered to me, but that they, that was available, so you, and then you can dig deeper into the particular intervention as well. I did however include the topic on retention, because one of the reasons why I'm so, always so excited to, to dig into the work of John Hattie is because I actually had the pleasure of being wrong, and what I was wrong with was, as a graduate student, I had to do a thesis paper, and a teacher had said during my program that retention doesn't work, and I was gonna absolutely prove to that, that teacher that that retention does work, and we, in UKs, we had been retained and they were successful, and so that was my thesis paper, was on the, the value of retention, and so I gathered all of the research, like a good thesis, so we did developing a good thesis would do, and I kept finding that, that that wasn't proving me correct, as John's laughing at it right now, right? And And, um, this was way before Hattie, right? And Hattie, um, has done way more research than I ever thought about doing on retention. But if you look at the last page, the last scale, you see the things in red. The thing, the, the, the things in red are items that are interventions that not only don't help at all, but actually hurt, right? So you have corporal punishments on that list, right? Right next to retention. So nobody here would say, I think beating somebody, I think, you know, physically he's being aggressive with somebody would have a value of improvement, right? But intuitively, we do think that retention does work, but it's actually right next to, um, corporal punishment. It's actually, the research has over the years, and it keeps, it keeps going, watching television is a better retention than retention. And if you look at the, um, the two pages I have at the very end, this is one small write-up on Hattie's, uh, he quotes, he quotes the work on retention from Foster, from House, from Barnes, from Holes, and on and on and on and on. He quotes the value of retention and the harm. So I only show you all this so that when we start thinking of the continuous improvement model here, Beaverton, number one, I want you to know, we do make decisions based on data and research, not hunches. And two, um, we want you to, to have a resource, and where do you go to when somebody says, hey, we need this, hey, we need that? And think about the value of this or that versus if the impact of this or that. So that's what I wanted to do to start the discussion on future goals, on developing the, um, developing the, um, the portrait of a future Beaveton graduate and any other tough decisions that we have to make in the long run. That's, that's my presentation for, for the day. Any questions on this? John?
Okay, I don't see it in this list, I don't know, it's just the naming of it. I've seen research that says one of the most effective things that can be done is looping teachers, where they have the same teacher who they looped the kids two years in a row. And I don't see it in here. I don't want to see it, but we're talking about that specifically.
And I actually moved with kindergarten class, first grade class, my first appointment, and I loved it, because I got to watch those first graders learn how to read. So John, I don't see it explicitly on here, so it's probably embedded in here, because it's a common strategy. So I want to find out where it is and get back to it.
So, so where can you go with the same structure? Yeah, by and large, you get into a looping program, you're going to have the same, same teacher for two years in a row, and you've got two teachers that just sort of cycle. So their second and third, second is your third year connection and so on. And then they have the same group of kids, where there, there is an option of opting out the second year if their personality issues at the third year, or going out. But what it does is you start in September, knowing the kid's ready to go, you know where they left off, who they start. I have that advantage through the high school math for the kids, because I get the whole research from behind, and what they did the year before, I know it, and it just makes it that much easier for teachers to be prepared. I mean, research, that is an effective strategy to do, especially like upper elementary or middle school, where you can do all sorts. Especially when you have an effective teacher, absolutely. Yeah, all, all research says that effective teacher can make all the difference in the world, right? One bad year, and it can really help the makeup. Or one good year, you can project them like two or three years ahead of it.
Has there been, uh, this, the first one was the one in the back, it's from 2009.
Yeah, so he's got, yeah, I, I picked three different.
This year's, 2017.
Yeah. I'll put in the board, I don't know if I put in the board, the one that has all three years on top, because they are all sandwiched.
Has there, has there been any new response or controversy from peer review of some of the scales there is on there?
So there was, there was that individual who's probably his biggest credit, who does him like four as the point four as the average. And Hattie's response is, an average is an average, I don't, you know, I don't control that. Um, I, I think because it's not his, it's not his research, it's, he's just taking the research and bringing the research together and putting the numerical value on it. Very limited, um, very limited-named reviews from other scientists. You know, when you believe in something and then you, you know, the research, one of the things that the meta-analysis does is it takes away the idea, you can find it, almost all the time, you can find a research topic that you should wave around and be like, look, this works great, right? Because it's one, it's a research, one scientist said this works great. So when you take 35 research topics on that, research papers or, or whatever you want to call it, um, on that particular topic and bring those together, you get a better, you get a better view of the value. So, so that's the nice thing, is he's not handpicking, so often we like to handpick our research, he's not handpicking research, he's bringing it all together, letting the numbers speak for themselves.
So when that four is the average, is that saying that basically that whatever, whatever topic it's discussing, is that saying it has like no net benefit?
No, it's saying it does have a, it has a, it has a, in Hattie's words, it has a benefit worth really doing and investing in. Now, that being said, like I said, there might be things we do around here that are point two.
Yeah.
We do that for other reasons than driving, you know, student achievement.
Understood.
But that's, point four above is something that if you're looking to improve student achievement, it'd be worthwhile to do.
Understood.
Yeah, so it's just a resource, so thanks. Jen, I'm going to hand it over to you, and can you, you talk to me about a few mechanical items that are, we're working on, we found out today.
Yes.
We just raised those up for hours.
Sure, sure. I've got a couple of things. I'll mention those. We have an elevator that's down in the elementary. Um, it's a, it's a serious issue, it's not going to be fixed easily, it's not going to be fixed quickly, unfortunately. The pistons, I believe, that make it go up and down have to be rebuilt. Um, so if the parts have, they're working on getting parts, but we don't have even a date when they're going, the parts are going to be here or when the company is going to be here to fix it. So they're working on it. Josh Nolan and Dan Noonan are calling religiously every day, asking what's, where is it at? What's going on? So it will be fixed as soon as we can possibly get it fixed. But they were talking about heavily not even knowing when the parts are going to be here till at least Friday. And that doesn't mean that they're scheduled to come on Friday. The other one is, um, a coil went bad in the dishwasher over at Cumberland Head, a hot water coil. So they don't have hot water at the dishwasher over in Cumberland Head, so they are using paper or doing dishes by hand. Um, that again, a part is coming from Canada, and Josh Nolan will be installing that, but that's not an easy install either. So, um, when it gets here, he will be working on that for a few days. So pretty big items that you guys should be aware of that are going on, that they are being worked on, it's just nothing moves fast as we all know right now. Um, then, um, we're also done collecting taxes. We finished up. Jackie Blue at Plattsburgh sent me out her documentation, and we finalized everything with Ms. Pelkey this morning, so tax collection is done. Uh, the county will be making us whole by, it takes them a few months to get everything done. Just wanted to give, I usually give you guys a heads up of the unpaid's that the county does make us whole for. It's very consistent with every other year. Um, it's not out of the norm. We have about $360,000 for our collection that is outstanding, and about $422,000 outstanding for Plattsburgh. Those are both very typical numbers, nothing out of the ordinary. So, um, that is completed. Um, you'll also see the seeker in here is to be approved for the capital project, that's to start our process going with the state. Um, Chelsea, I also didn't see, I didn't see the acceptance of the bid for the toilet in here. Did we miss that? Can we add that? Because we, we went out to bid for the toilet rooms that are going to be going in. Brand new construction was low bidder. They are over the $100,000 mark, but we have worked it out with Vernor Kar, we sat down and did some finances. They're going to do a change order in order to get it to the $100,000, and we'll take on as the district the responsibility for the remaining, remaining part of the work out of purchase orders. So that is the game plan, to get that done. Uh, it will not, cement pad needs to be laid and all of that groundwork needs to be done, so they probably will not be starting that until, I would say, April, probably, realistically before it starts. Um, we have been doing the plumbing, interior plumbing. Um, Josh Nolan has been doing a lot of stuff getting it prepped. Um, the sub pump, the up pump that will be working has to be in March. Our guys have been working on all of that, getting that prepped and ready. Um, so we are doing things to, to get ready for that. Um, the other thing is our fencing for the softball field is finally supposed to start. They said they'll be here Monday. I didn't realize they were going to start this late, but they said they can get it done, they're not worried about it. It's been warm, ground's soft, they're good. They said they're good, it'll be done in two weeks. That's, those are the timeframes they're giving me, which is wonderful. I didn't think they were going to do it until the spring, so they surprised me and they're going to get it done. So, um, I'm trying to think of anything else. Is that it?
Did that board resolution come from Mike's office?
Yes, I forward it.
Are you forwarding? I'll look for that.
Okay.
Anything else?
I think that's it.
All right. Well, I have the reports, and we can tend to business here. So for Beaveton High School, it is really hard to believe that Thursday is the last day of the first quarter. Report cards will be sent home on Wednesday, November 16th. I want to thank all of our staff and students for the dedication to creating an outstanding first quarter of the school. Apparently, the high school has seven extended learning opportunities, or ELOs, available to students to engage them outside of school hours. The opportunities entail Aladdin, the hit Broadway musical, and hairspray at Proctor's Theater, journalism at Sydney Plattsburgh, sports mania, crafting, procs indoor climbing, and morning lifting. Thank you to all the educators that create these opportunities for our kids. The high school has begun the implementation of the SEAL of Civic Readiness. Principal Pizayo, Associate Principal Miranda, and the Social Studies Department are working diligently to ensure our students have access to this wonderful opportunity that will be reflected on their transcript and a seal on their diploma. This is the first year that New York State has offered such a voluntary program, and VHS is already on creating further opportunities for our kids. The SEAL of Civic Readiness is a formal recognition that a student has attained a high school level of proficiency in terms of civic knowledge, civic skills, mindset, and experience. The civic, uh, the SEAL of Civic Readiness distinction, uh, pardon me, distinction on a high school transcript and diploma type of SEAL corresponds greatly with the SEAL of Bilinguacy that has been implemented for the past two years at the high school level. The SEAL of Bilinguacy is an award given by a school, school district, or state in recognition of students who have studied and attained proficiency in two or more languages by high school graduation. Our vision is to help students recognize the value of their academic success and see the tangible benefits of being bilingual. The high school is always looking to create recognition for students. As we close fall sports, Beaveton High School would like to thank all the coaches for their tireless effort and dedication to their kids' and sports programs. We would like to extend how proud we are of our student athletes and the way they are represented at our school this fall. Our sports team had outstanding success. Uh, we'd also like to thank the administrator of athletics and associate principal Frichette for his extreme dedication to our sports and extracurricular program. Your efforts and time do not go unnoticed. Great report by all. Moving on to Beaveton Middle School. We are looking forward to this month's Sower Days. Uh, this month's theme is gratitude. Through group activities and discussion, students will learn about gratitude, how to practice it, and why, and reflect on how to show appreciation for one another's unique strengths and talents. Students will reflect on how expressing gratitude can, uh, can contribute to the overall success and positive culture of our school community. On October 27th, sixth grade students participate in the STEM Festival facilitated by the Echo Mihai Center. Students explore hands-on science, math, and engineering activities by rotating to and from various stations. These students generated electrical energy that powered an inflatable tube character by pedaling a bike. They had fun with physics as they learned, uh, pardon me, as they leaned and rolled in jump-off spin chairs. And another popular activity was the vertical flyer, where they explored the effect that moving air has on different objects inside Echo's custom wind tool. The interdisciplinary grade-level teams have been diving into the 21, 22 New York State ELA and math assessment data during weekly team meetings. Teams have been identifying areas of strength and growth to inform their instructional goals in planning. We are proud of our modified girls volleyball, modified girls soccer, and modified boys football teams on their undefeated ball seasons. They are all proud of you for their hard work and dedication for this school year. And for the Cumberland Head Elementary School report, students and staff continue to progress successfully through the school year. Halloween was a ton of fun for our students and staff. The primary students paraded through the school in costume, and their older students lined playground and hallways cheering them on. All students were able to enjoy the holiday by doing fun projects and learning, uh, pardon me, doing fun, fun projects and classroom parties. Churn and Retreat was very well-attended. Many CH families came out to celebrate Halloween. Once again, the PTO put out another wonderful event. The data team met with individual teachers the last week of October to discuss Fastbridge benchmark results. Teachers were able to look at their individual class testing results to decide upon appropriate intervention, both academic and social and emotional speaking. This was a productive day for teachers as they took their time to dig deeper into the data. Parent-teacher conferences are scheduled for November 21st and 22nd. Parents and guardians are given the option of either an evening conference or a morning conference. They also have the flexibility of scheduling virtually. This is a great chance for parents and guardians to meet and collaborate with teachers and discuss student progress. We're looking forward to seeing our parents and guardians at the meetings. Additionally, the district-wide mega concert was a great event scheduled and organized by the BCSD Music Department. Under the direction of Joe Lietto, the CHES chorus and concert band were able to perform a song. The students did a nice job. It's especially nice to have the younger students see what the high school band sounds like, so they can aspire to achieve at that level. Thank you to the music department for another awesome show. Now, moving on to the Beaveton Elementary School. We have had quite a busy month at the ES. STEM is something that is always a hot topic. We are fortunate enough to have guests here from Echo to host STEM Festival for our third, fourth, and fifth graders, as well as the sixth graders from middle school. A partnership with Brilliant Pathways always does a nice job connecting us with wonderful resources. Students enjoyed going to different stations, such as the Wild, pardon me, the Wind Wall, Big Blue Rocks, Racers, and Generator. Students were able to ride bicycle to see if they could get the generator going, build big structures with the blocks, and even build Lego racers and see who has the fastest and why. For our PTO, we hosted a PA Streams with Parents event. We had nearly 100 people in the building from 8:00 to 8:45. Parents and their children were able to have cider donuts and juice for breakfast, and then read a book with their child. Thank you to Shazie Orchards for the donut donation. We also had a fall coloring sheets for kids to do. It was a very positive time to give families back from our building. We also opened our doors to families for our Fall Festival on a Friday evening. Middle school and high school student council students came throughout the facility. Mrs. Thu and the committee did a fabulous job organizing this event. Students and families participated in pumpkin sweepings, spooky spaghetti digs, spooky dance parties, and pin the spider on the web, just to name a few. Fire safety also took place outside last month with much success. Students had a great time going to each station to visit the ambulance, brush truck, ladder truck, and even our own SRO. Lastly, our elementary student council is back up and running. Sarah Knight and Stacy Poe have met with students twice and are currently working on a food drive for the Beaveton Food Shelter. That's all I have today.
That's all? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so the audit committee met on October 31st. We discussed the August and September 2022 financial reports. Um, treasurer Stahl gave a brief overview of the financial reports and the summer food service program. Cafeteria provided breakfast and lunch for the students attending summer school, summer bridge program, and the summer athletic camp programs. Um, the total breakfast and lunches served as of August 31st, 2022 were 4,000, just over 4,000, and 8,000 respectively, for a percentage increase of 83% from the previous year due to increased participation in the summer program. Um, we discussed, uh, financial impact of rising food costs, um... We discussed financial impact of rising food costs and of vendors not bidding on certain contracts. We also just reviewed the plant logs and there were real no concerns. I think it was just nice to know that Cafeteria is up and running and serving a lot more meals. We're resuming a back-to-normal sense of school. So that's it. Next meeting is in December. Any questions?
Questions? Hall of Fame?
I will. So we had our number of Hall of Fame last month. There's our second one, and by all accounts, it was fantastic. Everybody who attended was saying thank you so much. Special thanks, and I shouldn't name names because I know there's somebody else. The special thanks to Joanne Bernard and Justin Frichette for making this day happen at Pizayo as well, and the National Honor Society students. It was truly a celebration of excellence. Here at BCSD, we had people who were inducted into the Hall. One person was inducted into another Hall of Fame and had been as a college coach and former pro baseball player. Then maybe other Hall of Fame ceremonies thought this was as good one as he's, or the best one he'd ever been to. And then a retired teacher was inducted into the Hall of Fame, and a number of people, including him, had come up to me and saying how he was totally blown away with the experience, especially the fine details that he had, the cheerleaders helping do, I mean, the shoot, which I think was Justin's idea, putting the plaque on the wall and everybody getting into the picture doing that. The dinner, the coates, having the National Honor Society students give tours of the building. And for people to see the building now as opposed to when it was, super memorable, super impressive. Everybody should take the time to dedicate the time to go to that, to that event. Well worth it, and it's great to see so many people happy to be at Beaventown.
So it's one of the faculty community reports. For those of us, all of us have participation in committees, we have to participate in committees. So some people always go to committees, some go down to private, private trouble attending a meeting consistently. Just reach out to the people involved in the committee, try to figure out another time level better for the guys, either way or the other. But that's our responsibility as the Community Board. I do get a board of attendance for all the committees as well. So.
I think that it's important to be there so that you are in the know and transparency of what's going on. But also, you know, if there's meetings that don't work with your schedule because mornings are better or whichever, just like Ed said, reach out to us so that we can, maybe it's switched, so maybe there has to be a change though, so that we can increase the participation and attendance at those meetings. We'd be happy to look at that.
Good. All right. Public comments, is there anybody here to public comment?
He decided to wait and get on the dock for the next one.
Oh.
I do have one to say goodbye to.
As a huge part of America, you went to the National House, correct? So we'll push out the attendant for next meeting.
Yeah, I've seen Sam at one location already, she's running the conference.
She's a great girl.
She did, she presented also and goes into the last one. All right. Resolved the Superintendent of Schools, Recreational Board of Education to approve the following amendments. Motion, please.
Motion, Greg.
Second?
Second, John.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolved the Superintendent of Schools, Recreational Board of Education to approve the CSC, CPSC, and Private Corps Organizations, Day 11, 8, and 22. Motion, please.
I'll motion for.
Second?
Second, Chris.
Chris. And I know that there was a question by email. Do you still have the question or will you already answer?
Um, it hasn't been answered yet. I did send it to you via email, Dan. I didn't know if that was something that you wanted to discuss now, or you maybe had some things you wanted to look up and send me.
So the only other one question you had was, what was the first question that you had? I don't want to misquote it.
Uh, I could, I could pull up, open the email if you want me to, or...
Or paraphrase it, doesn't it?
No, um, well, my first question was specifically, you know, are we strictly voting on the budgetary side of it?
Right, yeah, that's a great question. So, so yes, essentially you are, so let me go through that. The Committee on Special Education could be, and they're, they're really charged with following the federal law, the IPA federal law, right? And why this comes to the Board of Education is there's usually, almost always, there is a financial side to any new service, so to speak. And I could hopefully bring in more new services, or maybe even change the service or lead a service. But the board has the, the board has the, the board is the only mechanism that can approve the expenditures or funds. I can say, yes, you do that, that would be great, in ten seconds, you got to vote for the board, right? So that's why, you're, you're voting on the expenditure, the financial side.
Fair enough.
That's a great question, yeah. And then this, did you have another question?
No, what I said, I had sent you a second email, but that was just a point, it was a point of conversation. I don't know, I don't think it's, I don't think it's anything we need to bring up.
I agree, okay. Just to, so going off of memory here, the great thing about the Committee on Special Education is that it's a multidisciplinary committee with, with people from different walks under the school district. And they do look at the data, and they look at the work that our school sites do, and they work, they look at student performance, data, discipline, and all different types of information to make, to serve the best, the best placement, when we provide the best services within what we do offer for the, for the students. So I, I would like to say, even though people point that, people, people don't prehump so many of our committees all the time, right? But they definitely are charged with making a very well-informed decision for the kids to help them in their, be in their correct placement. I guess I want to give a placement for a second, because this is a topic of conversation that a lot of people don't know. And I'm not pointing fingers, these are, this is a reality. And I think those who work with BOSI's know that a lot of kids, a lot of kids, a lot of folks feel that that student might not belong here, they might belong someplace else. There is no place else. BOSI's is full, right? There's no place else to place a student. Even when we tried to place a student in Malone at a residential, I think there was one day and they, they came back. We are charged with a public school of educating all of our kids. That's the beautiful thing about public schools, right? All, we don't get the charity kids or scholarship kids. So we're right now in a situation where even kids that we thought BOSI's had a better program, in their virtue that we feel that way, it was a better placement for the student, they are not getting in. There were two students in particular who were accepted into the BOSI program. They were going, and at the beginning of the year, BOSI said, we've moved them to the waiting list. And there's no, that waiting list never, I'll let you know the ducks, I will, that waiting list never, you know, slides down and we get in.
Yep.
So if we do get in, I'll let you know. Seriously, we just, you know, people get in, there's like, for instance, a lot of the rooms are six kids.
Yep.
And I'm not, that's just the way that room is configured. We have rooms with six, eight, 12 kids. That's the way some of these rooms are configured. But there, it's a misnomer to think there's someplace else where, where these kids are going to be educated. There are kids, if we didn't want to educate them, if we all said we don't want it, there's no place? That, that's not a decision you can make because they came down.
We're fortunate, and also we're a larger institution that can, can garner the overhead resources to allow more here, right? The smaller districts is more challenging, right? Just like, like vocational stuff, CTE stuff, we're able to do a lot of that here as well, right? Then that gets complicated with the families that move from one place to another. I was at the school board conference last week, I did a full law session, and there's some new laws with, I know you guys are all this, with school residence, school destination, all these different legal aspects of, not just if you're, you're resident or they choose to go somewhere else. We're still responsible for all those kids.
Sure.
They need to improve, so it's a really complicated exercise.
It is complicated, there's a lot, it's very, they call it a matrix, just special education. And we're fortunate to have some people who know the way around the matrix really well. I did want to bring up that other schools are experiencing that, and actually Ed's point maybe think is they actually know that BOSI's is what they call us and what kids are. We turn them away because we're pretty full. And if they're willing to pay us $100,000 for the staff work, trying to squeeze somebody in and make, make a, are a difficult situation, more stressful.
And then also, it's complicated with shortage of personnel. We signed up for that, jury aids, support, and so does the school district, so BOSI's is what actually...
So I just want to clarify and make sure that your question was answered. It basically spoke to the potential of risk to students and staff that were assessed for their better placement may be there at BOSI's, but they're not able to be because of spacing and stuff. And how are we, you know...
Absolutely.
...placing them and accommodating them, but also the teachers and other students.
And I think that, and first off, I appreciate clarifying the, the scope of the, of the vote. Especially specifically being on the budgetary side. I greatly appreciate that.
And so you actually didn't reach out to the attorney?
Yep.
Paul, you just called an attorney just to make sure we were...
No, absolutely, I appreciate that. But, and, you know, I, I hope, you know, everyone can understand the, the reasoning behind the question. You know, just wanting for me to understand, you know, how are we making these assessments and making sure that we're keeping into consideration not only the safety of the students, but the safety of the staff that has to deal with these kids on a daily basis?
Were you proud of the elements?
I think that goes without...
Oh, no, absolutely.
...for every area, though. So...
Absolutely.
For whenever all the decisions are made, so it kind of speaks to that as well.
Yep.
You know, they have to take those things into consideration when replacing those students and how minimizing the...
Safety for everybody is finally important. I like the question a lot, because I have, I looked at the fine details of that, so...
Sure.
Now, now I'm gonna...
Much appreciated.
All right. Any other questions or discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Resolved Superintendent of Schools, Recreational Board of Education of the following resolutions of the consent agenda, designation, appointments, and entire NPA are hereby approved. Motion, please.
Motion, John.
Second?
Second.
Would that be...
Dave.
Any discussion, question, all? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we add the other financial session?
The, the, did we work that out today? We just came to the end of the day.
Well, who's up? I'll motion there, that's the financial session. Ms. Williams. Resolved Superintendent of Schools, Recreational Board of Education of the following resolutions of the consent agenda, contract senior clerk, NTS, NTS S plan, electric, orders, April 4th, the day changes to, to 2023, 24 months calendar, in are hereby approved. Motion, please.
Motion, direct.
Second?
Second, Nicole.
Any discussion, questions, all? All in the financial session.
I need to recall, that NTS S plan, that, that response intervention, that was high on Patty's list.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. I motion to add to this financial consent agenda the resolution stated here to, uh, to add the article by a general legal law, Seal for 2022, 2023 capital project. Take the motion to add, please.
Motion, direct.
Direct. Second?
Second, John.
Just to add this to the consent agenda. Any questions or discussions on this? This is for the 161, 1055 as discussed by Ed earlier. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And motion to add, consent agenda happens. And now, with the, with the new motion in it, resolved Superintendent of Schools, Recreational Board of Education of the following resolutions of this consent agenda, financial reports, formation, transfers, grants, in are hereby approved. Motion, please.
Motion. Direct.
Second?
I'll second, Nicole.
Nicole. Any questions, confusion on this? Clear? All right, this is a roll call.
Madracy.
Aye.
Ed Westbead.
Yes.
John Fairchild.
Yes.
Christopher Galloway.
Yes.
Patty Lillam. Ed Marin.
Yes.
Nicole Pupour.
Yes.
Richard Sears.
Yes.
David Trugel.
Yes.
Motion passes. The next one, the secret. Capital project addition or renovation project. Look at motion as, as the...
Yeah.
So that's the first. I'll take a second.
Second. Doug.
Any questions or discussion on the secret? This is what you were talking about in presentation. All right, roll call, please.
Madracy.
Aye.
Ed Westbead.
Yes.
John Fairchild.
Yes.
Christopher Galloway.
Yes.
Patty Lillam. Ed Marin.
Yes.
Nicole Pupour.
Yes.
Richard Sears.
Yes.
David Trugel.
Yes.
Motion passes. All right. So we have a couple of kind of resolutions. So the first one, first one is a resolution regarding solid settlement of the nation's judiciary for Chamber Center South associates. File Article 7, back to share petition for the House of Court. I can continue with over... Over, okay, so, call, call motions.
Second, Doug.
Doug. Just clear, this is something we went over in the executive session. Everyone's aware of this, we're discussing, I'm setting it for... Any questions on this again? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. The next one. This is regarding the lawsuit brought to the district. Also discussed in the executive session, parts of lawsuits with the warehouses. Anybody prepared motion to move this forward, air discussion, move it forward? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All of this is management legal counsel. All of this is managed with legal counsel? All right. Any other issues or discussions? Oh, um, if, if you have not already figured out how to log into the, uh, Superintendent School, please reach out to Chelsea to get, figure out, you know, you're starting to log into that, get familiar with the process, uh, of course, uh, certain investigations. Please, please straightforward. Any questions? Anyone here for public comment? All right. And you not having a session, so you're going to, going to attend. So, the board of education adjourned meeting at seven thirty-six. Motion, please. Greg? Second?
Great, second.
All in favor?
Put it on the draw.
All right. Thank you, David.